Councilman, I'm the mayor, Michelle Tate, and I'll be conducting tonight. We appreciate all of you being here tonight. We will have our opening ceremony and pledge allegiance by councilmember Weiss.
Please stand and review pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly father, we are indeed grateful for this opportunity we meet tonight as a city council. And we ask our spirit to be with us as we discuss the needs of the city. We are thankful for our great city and the people that live in it. We ask you to watch over them and bless them. We ask a special blessing on those that serve our country. And I ask you to watch over and bless them, protect them. Again, we're thankful for all we have, and we say this. I salute you, Christy.
Amen.
Thank you. I want to excuse councilmember Jackson, he's out of town tonight. Moving on to item three, our consent items. Item A, approval of meeting minutes November fourteenth, 2023, and December sixth, 2023, Board of Campus Meeting as presented. Council, we had a chance to look at those meeting minutes and any changes? No, I've made a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of November fourteenth, 2023, and December sixth, 2023.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any thoughts? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number four, we have an oath of office. Chief Wilson, I'm going to turn this over to you, if you will.
I agree.
Just introduce.
Just introduce what it is, and then we'll have Jack.
So now, we're going to swear John Millaway has his new official title is Sarge.
Want to come up?
I'll draw your hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I'm John Millway.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Alright, thank you. You need to come up here so we can. Congratulations. Thank you for your service.
Congratulations. Thank you, everybody.
We like to do things like this. Have a recognition of our officers and everyone else in the city. Alright, moving on to item number five. We have another recognition that we're going to do tonight. As most of you know, it's the come to the end of a, it's December. So we're at the end of the year, and we have a council member leaving. Kenny, why don't you come all the way down? I want you to come down here.
This is not supposed to happen.
This is gonna happen. How long have you served, Kenny?
Three years.
Three years. He served, we put him in to finish off a term, and then you ran for the two-year term, right?
Right.
We appreciate the time that you've served, and this is presented to you in appreciation.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, and good luck with your endeavors going forward. We're going to miss you here.
I'll be back.
Okay, sounds good. We usually wait until that later, but you're going to be gone. We'll have to do it tonight.
Thank you.
Let's run that on you. Item number six, our business items. First on here is our Harrisville Youth City Council Activities Update. Which one of you want to come first? Sadie? Okay, come up and introduce yourself, please.
My name is Sadie Greenhall, and on November twenty-second, we went to the Weaver Center, and we got to learn about the voting process. And they just took us on a tour through like how the voting process works, and like how they, when they accepted the ballots, and opening them and sorting them. And we just got to see like all the technology they had. And something that like stood out to me is how like much time it took to like be able to like go throughout the process and make sure that every vote was counted.
Thank you. Is it Tyra? Alright, come on up and introduce yourself too, please.
Hello, my name is Tyra Mackler. I'm a member of the Harrisville Youth City Council. Last night, I had the privilege of being one of Santa's little elves at the local porch party to collect donations for the food pantry at Pioneer Elementary. In total, we had over six hundred and eighty pounds of food collected. The Youth City Council helped to keep the drinks and treats table stocked for all the guests, as well as help the little kids make a variety of ornaments. Additionally, we arrived early to help set up and weigh the donations afterwards. We also aided in the regulation of the Santa attraction. The family that was hosting the party expressed their gratitude for the Youth City Council, saying that it was the most organized and productive year for them. We also have an exciting event coming up in March, where we will have the opportunity to stay overnight at a conference at Utah State University. The conference is designed with Youth City Councils in mind. It teaches more about local governments and gives us more ideas on how to have a positive impact in our surrounding community. These conferences are so vital to the Youth City Council and our city in general because it is helping the newer and younger generations get a chance to get involved and find a passion for helping others and the government. It is through joining Youth City Council about three years ago that I have grown enormously, slave. I have more self-confidence and knowledge about what's going on in my local community. I also have gained a passion for not only communication, but government as a whole. I'm currently a junior in high school, which means that senior year is just around the corner for me. This program has been nothing but a blessing in my life, and I believe it is important that this program continues to grow. In the past two months, our program has grown from eleven kids to twenty-one kids. We've almost doubled. I'm so pleased that more and more people are becoming interested in the work that we do as Youth City Council. Thank you for your time and attention. Is there any questions?
No. Well, I do have a question. Did you want more of those pictures shown?
If you go a little bit further, there are pictures from last night. That's everyone at the field trip. That's from last night. You can see some of us as like, that's us helping at the treats table. This was the line for Santa. A lot of people mingled at that event, got to know each other. And that's me as well.
Hey, you're cute.
Thank you. That's all the donations that we receive. And that's us in the process of weighing it all.
Thank you. Good job, Hobb. Appreciate you. Good talk to you, boys. Alright, item B, discussion possible action to adopt Harrisville City 2024 meeting schedule. Uh, Jack, you want to do this?
Thank you, Mayor. So the 2024 meeting schedule will follow the same format as this year. The meetings will take place, city council will take place on the second Tuesday of the month, with one meeting during the month unless we have to schedule another one for like this month with the campus meeting. And the planning commission will be on the second Wednesday of the month, with one meeting during the month. So here's the dates. You guys should have the papers in front of you and up on the board. Do you have any questions or concerns about those dates, or any changes that need to be made?
Council, you have anything that we need to, you need to adjust those dates for? I don't think there's anything that's come up in here. If we're good with these, can I have a motion to adopt that schedule?
I'll motion to adopt the Harrisville City 2024 meeting schedule.
We got it. Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any thoughts? Alright, thank you. Item C, this is discussion possible action to adopt Harrisville Resolution 23-19, which is an interlocal agreement with Weaver County for delivery of solid waste collection to the Weaver County Transfer Station. Uh, Jenny, now.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. This interlocal agreement was agreed upon at the November wake-up meeting, and they are implementing a program, asking local municipalities to make sure and ensure that all of our solid waste is going to the transfer station. That is typically where waste management, who we contract for, for our solid waste services, that's typically where they take our solid waste anyway. And when I reached out to them to see if they had any concern with us entering into this interlocal agreement, they said this is a common practice through the transfer stations for them. So they didn't have any concerns. Our waste management contract doesn't actually expire until June of 2025, so I wanted to make sure they don't have any concerns. This will just ensure that we take all our, excuse me, solid waste to the Weaver County Transfer Station. County has invested a lot of their resources into that. We want to make sure that that's beneficial for the residents.
So this isn't just our garbage pickup, but it's all of our residents?
It's all of the residential solid waste that waste management picks up from our contract.
Any other questions? Any discussion? Alright, we have a motion.
A motion to adopt Harrisville Resolution 23-19, interlocal agreement with Weaver County for delivery of solid waste collection to the Weaver County Transfer Station.
Alright, a motion in a second. This is roll call, please. Councilmember Loveland?
Yes.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkinson?
Yes.
Alright. Motion carries. Thank you. Item D, discussion possible action to adopt Harrisville Resolution 23-20, recertification of the Harrisville Justice Court. Jenny, this is also you, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, unless some help may possibly on this item, due to my voice not being very available, I'm going to probably introduce this a little bit for you.
Mayor, council. So this is a requirement by rule, by statute, that any municipality that has a justice court has to recertify the court every four years, basically to ensure compliance with the statute and also the rules of judicial conduct and procedure. The statute requires us to, one, have an opinion letter authored by me. I do have to say, I apologize, I authored a couple different ones with my various things that I do. And I jumbled one, and it ended up being yours, so I apologize for that. We had the issue with one. But glad we got that clarified, and I apologize for that. It also requires this body to look over that and pass this resolution as before you. And then also, I believe Judge Nelson, who's here, he has an affidavit that he has to submit along with that. Those have to be in there by the end, basically the end of this week. And just a fact of the matter, I think the justice court, you know, no one really wants to go into the weeds of that very often. But I think, just so the council and mayor, as everyone's aware, since I've started, there's been a lot of what I would call internal and process changes in the justice court to really make it better. I, in my experience, in over a decade doing different levels of criminal courts, I practiced and at least been in just about every court in Weaver County, and a lot of the courts in Northern Davis County as well. And I, of the smaller entities that run their own justice court, Harrisville does a great job. They're a lot more professional than a lot. They run a lot better than some of the other ones that I've been to. And I think a lot of that has been one of the support that everyone receives from this body, but also Jenny and her staff has implemented some changes, have listened to some of the judicial audits and implemented things that, as often with courts, if anyone's been in court. They don't seem like big deals and/or they seem redundant or a waste of time. But when you go through the process of court, it makes a big difference in the operation and the fundamental fairness. So really, in my opinion, Jenny and the staff that do the justice court operations, both in and out of court, really deserve some kudos for some of the things that they've done in the last little bit. We are certainly compliant with the standards and the statutes that we have to meet as a Class III court here in Utah, and I see nothing wrong with the court and no reason that it should be recertified. Any questions?
Thank you.
Alright, if there's no questions, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Harrison, Harrisville Resolution 23-20, recertification of the Harrisville Justice Court.
I'll second it.
Alright, I have a motion in a second. I also need a roll call vote for this. Councilmember Christiansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Loveland?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Item E, discussion possible action to surplus the cell phones. Are you going to be able to take this one?
Sure. I hope so. This will be very great. It's about that time for the city staff's upgrade for our cell phones. This is pretty standard protocol. When we upgrade the phones for the city employees, we surplus the old phones. We factory reset them, and then we sell them at the fair market value of those phones. This has been a pretty good practice for the city. This number of employees have taken advantage of that. We receive, I don't know what to call it, kind of a gauge of the pricing, what the value of the phones are from other companies that would purchase them from us. And a lot of the employees are willing to pay the same price. So it's been a benefit for them to buy our old phones for their personal use. So we're just asking to surplus all those old phones.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Jenny. May I have a motion or a dissent?
I'll make a motion that we surplus the cell phones. Has been stated.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion carries. Thank you. Item M, discussion possible action to approve the hiring of an officer using funds awarded by the cops grant. Chief Wilson.
Good evening, everybody. Before we get too far into this, obviously, you guys have heard the last couple council meeting that we were awarded this grant that pays for two officers for three years. The grant will pay for approximately thirty-nine percent of their salary for the three years. The reason that I'm here to ask for this position now instead of the start of next budget season is we are losing one of our officers in June. And with the hiring process the way it is right now and the applications, it's so hard to hire someone. It's going to be very difficult for us to be able to train two people at once with our resources. So I'd like to try to get ahead of the curve here and get the officer hired with the grant, and then that will give us some time after Officer Clark leaves to get his position filled from there. Like I said, this is for two officers. The grant lasts for five years, so the goal would be to hire one now. And then in June, when Corey leaves, we'll replace him. And I mean, that's going to be anywhere from six months to a year. And once that's complete, we'll try to go for the second officer, depending on how some of our other things are going on in the city. But again, we said that it pays for thirty-nine, thirty-nine percent of the salary. The financial advisor of the city was, has recommended that we use the money and pay seventy-five percent of the salary in the first year and twenty-five percent the second year. So our portion would be twenty-five the first year, and then seventy-five the second year. The next question, with the hiring of one of these officers, the grant only pays for a entry-level position. So not only do we need permission to add the officer, but some direction on, do we want to stay at the entry level? Or are we going to be able to maybe hire somebody with some experience if that application comes in? So just to be clear, it is only going to pay the seventy-five percent of the salary of the entry-level position, which is a twenty-six dollar position.
Do you have any questions? I think we need to discuss that. Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yes.
So with the entry level one, then we have to go through all the training, I mean, from the very beginning, right? Where if it's an experienced officer, we have not as much training?
There's not as much FTO time, which is the field training. Sometimes that can be shorter. I'm not opposed to hiring a new officer, but you just never know what applications you're going to get. I mean, we've had several in the last few weeks, but none that I would even take into a background at this point. So, I mean, the field's pretty tough in hiring officers right now. So you kind of, sometimes you get them in a month. Sometimes it takes six months to hire someone. It's hard, you know? This is the first time that we're fully staffed in a long time. So it's tough to hire people right now. And leaving up, losing Master Officer Clark in June is going to be a big hit to us. He's one of the officers with the most experience here, so. And he's over at the school, so he's going to be hard to replace, for sure.
So if you come, if you go for somebody that has the experience, then what are you looking at?
I'm not necessarily saying that I'm going to go out and recruit someone with experience. We'll put the job.
If that candidate comes in, then what's the, what's the, yeah, what's the cost? If he's your guy?
So depending on how much experience, some. When you get to the top end of our pay scale in officers, it's around a thirty-five dollar an hour officer. The yearly salary and benefits for an officer at thirty-five dollars an hour is approximately a hundred, a hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred. And then someone at twenty-six dollars an hour is a hundred and four. So you're looking at, what, twenty-eight thousand dollar difference between the two.
But I guess what you're asking is, can you do whatever you need to do to fill the position?
Can we, can we add the position in January, start looking to hire someone? And what is your decision on, do you want to stick with that lower end? Or do you want to give me some latitude on what kind of applicants we get?
So my question is, is where does it come out of budget?
So it'll come out of the?
It'll come out of your budget.
Of, yes, the police department? Am I speaking? You can go ahead and speak for yourself.
So the grant will pay, the grant will pay seventy-five percent of that salary. When you're talking this budget year, you're only talking half of this, right? Because this budget season's almost over. So even if we were to hire somebody in January, which is not probable, you're only looking at half of this number until we do the budget for the next year. So you're looking at fifty-two thousand to sixty thousand dollars, and then our portion of that, the twenty-five percent of that.
I personally would rather see you go after somebody that has the experience. If it's going to cost us a little more, because then the training is going to be a lot shorter, and they're going to be in the field. That's just my opinion.
I mean, I'll be honest, if we get a guy that comes out of the academy that's promising, I don't mind the new guys. I don't. But you just don't know what kind of applications you're going to get. And if somebody does come that has the experience that we can use here, it's obviously worth the money.
I think you should hire the best candidate, whether that's a person or somebody with experience.
Do you have any other questions on any of that?
No, I'm supportive of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I think if we do that, I would need somebody to make a motion, including those items in our discussion.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the hiring of an officer using funds awarded by the cops grant, starting in January, and also hiring the best candidate for that position. I'll second.
Is that what we need to have in that motion?
Yes.
Perfect. Alright, thank you. I have a motion and a second. This is roll call also. Councilmember Wilkinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Loveland?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, item number seven is our public comments. And this is for anyone in the audience that would like to come to the podium. And you have three minutes to address the council with any of your concerns. And I'm going to open that up right now.
Maybe the only time we get a chance today to say hi to everybody, but Mayor, council staff, thank you for your recertification. Thanks, Jenny, for setting it up, and Mr. Flynn. I'm just very privileged to work here and feel very grateful to be the judge here at the justice court, so thank you for that opportunity. We have different roles, administrative, executive, legislative, and judicial, so there's a little separation of power there. But I'm very grateful to be here. If you have feedback from me in terms of how things are going, I'm open to that. But just grateful to be here. I know I missed your dinner last week. I was planning on coming, but then some family things came up. So I still brought some chips, which are expensive nowadays. But sorry, I missed that dinner.
We missed you.
But thank you for the chance to be part of Harrisville City.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I think I have a close to public comments at this point. Moving on to item number eight, Mayor, council call up. We're going to go with our Public Works Director, Justin Chinsel. You'll get that report.
Yeah. Well, again, like we say all this time of year, waiting on the snow. So we did have one storm. It wasn't very impactful. We did get out and plow and salt the roads. And so we're just kind of waiting for that. Hopefully, we find out some very good news by the end of this week with relation to our Public Works building. So we're waiting on those bids to come back in, and hopefully rehire a general contractor, and hopefully we see ground moving by February. So right now, we're just kind of keeping the subdivisions going, and all our kind of roadway projects have died down for the year because asphalt plans are closed and everything else. So, yeah, we're just moving ahead and waiting for those snowstorms so we can just tackle them right away. So thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so we had a pretty busy week last week. We had our Christmas party, our Santa parade, and our Shop with a Hero. I think all of them went way good. This is our third year for the Shop with a Hero. I believe we started with twelve kids the first year. And I think we were eighteen last year, and we were twenty-three this year. So all the support and everything from the community and the donations and everything was awesome. That kind of makes it happen for us. Walmart donated quite a bit of money. Lee's donated part of the breakfast for that morning, as well as Walmart. There was a little bit of leftover money after everything was paid, and they have selected another family to be able to help as well. So that's kind of cool with that, too. That's about it. It's kind of been a busy week, and we were kind of focused on that stuff, but it sure was fun. It's nice to see the whole city come together and pull this stuff off. It's, for a small city, I think we do a really good job.
Thank you, Chief, for the parade.
One question. Did you run the drone completely, or the whole time in the parade?
So for the parade, we, the only time the drone wasn't in the air was from like Larson Lane to down where the mayor lives. So, but, yeah, it took all four sets of batteries, but we got some good videos. Jack flew the drone the whole time. He's getting to be an awesome pilot, but he's got a bunch of videos to download that we can start putting on there. Yeah, it's cool. It's cool to have that resource. You know, this social media stuff, it's cool to use it for that. But when you get right down to it, it's practice for when we really need it. So we're getting a few good pilots that, we're getting ready to start the program where it'll be in cars during shifts, probably in the next month, Jack. So we're excited.
Appreciate it. Also, Chief, you know, you circled the city and you dissected it in and out, and I got nothing but positive feedback. People were excited. What's that sirens going on? They're all running outside, and perfect weather to go out and wave, and, you know, that's the best PR, people knowing what's going on.
Yeah, the city's doing some really cool things right now.
So thank you.
It's a good time to be here.
Thank you. Jenny?
Thank you, I'll be very brief, but I just want to take you back off of the same. We had an extremely fun week. I say I'm stressed out eleven months of the year, and December's the one month I get to play, and it's been a really fun time to be involved. If you'd like to take a peek in the mayor's office, you'll see all of the benefits of the giving tree that are taking place right now. It's been a wonderful partnership with Walmart. They've done a great job helping us put our tree down there, and people are very, very generous. We put one tack out for one item and they always exceed what we're asking for. So it's just a credit to our community and their efforts to want to help people that are underprivileged at this time of year. So we try to do a lot of fun with these activities that we have, and I'm extremely happy and proud of our staff, they stepped up. We've raised the bar here in Harrisville, and they've all exceeded our expectations, and it's just a privilege to be here, so thank you. And we'll miss you, Councilmember Loveland, but we know you're going to want to do great things as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Flynn, since you're not here very often, would you like to recall anything?
I would just, I kind of spoke about the court already today, so that's good. Otherwise, I do just want to commend the city staff. There's been a lot of changes this last, especially two years, but this year, and just requirements from municipalities, from the state, and there's a lot of effort that went into complying with those changes, some of which were major, major. The subdivision ordinance that I think we did last month, and I say we, I really didn't do that much, Jenny and her staff really took care of a lot of it, that was a major project. Just for reference, we looked about 10 days ago trying to copy or check on a couple of issues that we found in a different municipality's ordinance, and we could not find another city that had already done that yet, so, besides Harrisville. So congratulations, there's been a lot of work. I know you guys are probably sick of hearing this, but the minority income housing report for one, good job on that. Again, I don't think I should say publicly some of the things that I've heard from other municipalities regarding that and some of the difficulties that went in it, but that was a very arduous task that was completed by staff and by you guys, so good job. All in all, I think the city is functioning great and you're handling legally the things that you have to, very well.
Thank you. Council, Councilmember Willenson?
Well, we had our monthly senior luncheon today, and grew, we had 30 people show up, so, you know, and had some great entertainment, and it was just a delightful time. So, once again, thank you for Public Works and taking care of our needs. I got to go in and recapture the box that belongs to us, because I said it on the shelf, but no, it was just real positive. People actually lingered for a good 15 or 20 minutes, and that's what I like to see. You know, it's not just come and eat, but people socializing and visiting and communicating back and forth. I think we're starting to get out, and as I talk to people, they're telling more, there were three or four or five new ones that came, and there were a few that, you know, that I'd heard from. Some I talked to and they didn't know about it, so hopefully next month there'll be more. We're leaning towards a potato bar next month.
Sounds good. Thank you. Councilwoman Weiss?
Yeah, Council, I talked to Grover earlier, I've talked to the mayor and Jenny. The cabin is kind of plain inside, very bare, and so I thought maybe if you guys would agree, asking maybe Joyce Larson and Shannon Edwards, who have most of the photography and the records, if we could get them to go back, start a searching pictures, maybe within two or three years, a couple pictures, and have them done, we can find the money to have them done, and nice frames, and then put them up all the way around the cabin and date them, you know, from this time to this time. And I think that if we could do that, then that would, when people come there and people rent it, they'll see the history of what, you know, the city is at, and I'd like to see it go from beginning to where we're at right now, and then maybe just, if you guys could figure out. But if that's something that you think could be worthwhile and we could, and should we pursue it, I would just, what's your feedback?
I think it's a good idea, I mean, the pictures are here, I think it's great.
Justin, can you see any reason why we shouldn't? You think there's the people that...
The only reason is making sure that they're either fastened to where they can't be removed because what's inevitably going to happen, somebody's going to be in it, they're going to see all the pictures, and it's their wedding, and they don't want to cover them, so they just want to take them down, or, you know, then they get misplaced or broken. So just trying to find a way to make sure that they're fixed and can't be removed, or if we do need them down, we just have to somehow coordinate that on the rental that we'll go innovate or take them down, put them in a safe spot.
There's something we can...
I imagine so. I mean, there's some wall surfaces that might be a little more difficult to, you know, those logs, how do we fasten them well? Again, we can figure it out. It's not an impossible task, but it's also something that I know if we're going to invest that kind of money into, it would be nice that we make sure that that's professionally done and works, you know, the frames match, the...
I think it's also something that if you want to do some rotation of pictures, they don't just the same ones, but that creates a variety, it's just communication that can be changed out.
I think that would be good, especially on the new end, as we grow in the city, you know, as this neighborhood or this business, you know, things that happen, they're, you know, things are important in the city, so that's something I would like to see if we can pursue.
Come on.
I like the idea. I mean, just like Blair said, you look in here, there's a lot of heritage, there's a lot of history, and I kind of like the idea of making it so we can take them down, so they can decorate and not decorate over them, that's my opinion.
Could that just come at additional cost?
I don't think so. Or maybe look at, you know, what the cleaning deposit is, and if they take them down and they damage one, then we keep that deposit to...
Okay. We can figure it out.
Okay. Last month, Shannon Edwards gave kind of the history of what was going on. I learned we had a swimming pool there, I didn't know that, and that the girls couldn't go because of the noise, obviously, it was a swimming hole. But, you know, those type of things, I didn't know the history was going on, so, I mean, that dates back. Walking over one wall, maybe not seeing a swimming hole, but the factor of walking over something that's current today gives me a visual that there's pride that's taking place in Harrisville as it's progressed and grown. I meant to help support that, just so that you know.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else, Steve?
No, Jenny's got something.
Just as a follow-up, would you like staff to meet with the history committee and find out the pricing of things, and then we'll bring it back to you with your approval?
Yeah.
Sounds good. Thank you. Councilman Loveland, this is your master rock.
Yeah, you're probably not glad about that. No, just thanks to staff for the last three years, it's been very, I've learned a lot, and it's because of the good people that work for Harrisville and those of us who are elected. It's been a great three years, I really, really enjoyed it. And I got to give kudos to Grover, you know, he said we had great entertainment today, but he didn't mention it was history quartet, so, and I don't even like that kind of music, but I'm a rock one or three guy, but I really enjoyed it today. You noticed that I stayed for the whole time, so, it was really good. But yeah, so, I just appreciate all the work that goes into the city, so thank you all.
Thank you. Councilman Christensen?
Just as everybody already said, thanks for everything, all that you do. I don't have anything new to say.
And I'm going to follow up with everything. We had a great, we were there at the luncheon today, and I think I've been at the cabin last Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and today, and I think I haven't been there in a long time. Everyone really came together this last week and put on quite a few programs for the city, and it's been wonderful. And I invited everybody to look at my office and see the gifts there and things we've asked from people, and, you know, if someone's coming wrapped and there's 10 gifts in the same wrapping paper, you know they took more than multiples off the tree, and it's been wonderful, and we cannot keep up with putting the tags on the tree of Walmart. So our community is very invested in this, and it's a wonderful program to take part in, and have Harrisville behind, so. And with that, I got to thank all of you again for being here and wishing you all a Merry Christmas. All right, and with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's see, just thank you.